If it's completed, then that was assumed to be the cost. If it's not completed, then the maximum cost is assumed to be the cost. And what was presented last week was.
Mm-hmm. But did you get one of these?
Just now, yes.
Do you guys want to go ahead and start?
Yeah.
I think it's mine.
Do you want to have a microphone on?
No.
No.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
All right, I'm going to call the meeting to order on the select board. We are going to discuss the ARPA projects and then we are going to discuss the building, Town Municipal Building. It's the 24th of April. We just received information about what has been estimated and what's been spent for ARPA too.
Yeah, and one major correction on here that I know a couple of board members I talked to before the meeting, highway garage door replacement. The original spending report I had had listed fifteen thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars for that door replacement. When I was going through actual receipts from contractors, we had paid fifteen hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Right.
So I felt sort of foolish having to point that out, but nonetheless, I thought having an additional fourteen grand was better news than not.
Yeah, moved the decimal point in the right direction. That's very nice.
Selectman Budby had just indicated that he was not pleased with the arrangement of the chart because he wanted a separate column for what was committed. This is obviously the second tranche of money. We had overspent the first tranche slightly by about six thousand, actually by about twenty-eight thousand dollars. So we started with two hundred twenty thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents for the second tranche. And these are the projects that I had listed for fiscal year 2023. There are a couple of things that stand out on here. I've got actual cost, that's what we've spent. There are some notes regarding pending additional charges to write. That's primarily for the MTS software. Under the estimated cost, these were things that you originally threw on the list. I talked with the DPW director about the cemetery shed. Asked him when that was going to start, if he had an amount other than the five thousand four hundred fifty dollars we'd originally allocated. He said he didn't consider the project critical, had not done any planning for it and was not sure of a number. When I asked about the transfer station sprinkler pipes, he pointed out that they had replaced a lot of them themselves after the freeze-up this past winter.
I'm getting water out of this.
And he did not see that expenditure as critical or necessary. They may be able to finish things on their own in-house. Building energy upgrades, there was nothing coded under that eight thousand dollars that was set aside. Although I do know that we did some work on the door downstairs here. And I need to talk to Steve about whether he considered that an ARPA expenditure or whether we considered it a straight building maintenance expenditure. It was not tagged with an ARPA code and put in our ARPA file. Those are the primary things that were committed that have not been spent, those DPW items. There's a few things in here under estimated cost I had listed not planned. Those are things that just got thrown in. You know, we said, well, we paid for that with ARPA. They weren't on the original list. And that would be things like the Conservation Commission, bridge expenses, the highway door replacement.
I haven't copped it all in months, so I apologize. I'm trying to math it, I have no idea.
Meeting in front of the microphone.
Yeah. Don't know what that's about. Hopefully it was just.
On the MTS software, I had an original quote of fifty-eight thousand dollars. The cost is going to be considerably less than that. But I am likely to need to spend somewhere in the vicinity of four thousand dollars to complete the process. We have one more module for cash receipting that we are putting in play. Couple of reasons for that. One, it replaces a cumbersome hand and paper system that we're using right now. And two, it pleases the auditors. That's something the auditors have been dinged for. Two audits in a row is not having an appropriate cash receipting program.
Did Newland Craftlin?
Yes.
Eighty-four and we only spent fifty-four. Is the difference the rebate?
It is, the total cost.
Did you consider that rebate a netty of expense or is it going to show in revenue?
Joanne had convinced me that she could do it as net of, a net of expense and it would not show in revenue.
The numbers where the estimated costs and the actual costs are different? Is the actual cost the final cost except for the MTS software?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And if you look at the completed, I've got yes or no whether it was completed. The only other one is the easement design consult. This was with regard to the hurdle situation. There was a meeting to get that started. It was paid from ARPA money. A little bit of consulting fee just to give planning and zoning advice moving forward. Depending on how that continued and what the town agrees to, there could be more expense there whether you choose to pay it out of ARPA or not. I don't know. It wasn't originally on your project list for ARPA.
So the total number of things that we discussed that we still are planning on doing are with the five, let's say five thousand dollars for the MTS software. The, what did we say about the building energy upgrades, eight thousand five hundred dollars?
I don't have anything that was tagged as ARPA payable under that. I should probably go back through that with Steve Bullock and see if there's anything we could tag there because the, the building maintenance budget is well over expended for this year.
And I know we have that door down there that's just really, it needs some problem and also these windows all need insulation.
And these, these projects have not been done. The door had some work done on it just to try to straighten it so you couldn't see between the seams, but.
It's better definitely, but still, the snow doesn't come in as quickly, which is good.
Yeah, and the problem with the door was that it was just sort of hanging freely there. It had not been attached on the sides.
Oh, that's, that's always good to attach the doors, always. Okay.
Well, that's interesting.
They're close.
Why aren't they the same? Did you include the four ninety-five?
Yes, I believe so.
Did you use five?
Four, yes.
Did I add these incorrectly?
I think they're adding separately and count different numbers.
You did add separately and have different numbers.
But they're in the general, there are a difference of, what is?
Six fifteen ninety-six.
Five hundred dollars off. Which in the nature of things, I'm not going to worry about it.
So what are our thoughts as far as what we have left in a general ballpark? Is there some kind of a project that doesn't have an exact amount attached to it yet? But it is a general area that we're interested in? What are the thoughts you guys have?
Well, I think I'd need to see what else is on our list that maybe we can utilize, so.
Which list? The financial planning tool?
Yep. Yes, so far according, according to Rebecca and my calculations, even though they're out five hundred dollars, we've got about forty-seven, forty-eight thousand dollars that we need to commit to something before the end of June.
And I feel like we went through a lot of the financial planning tool before. And some of the things that we've talked about since have been continued building upgrades for like a library and places like that. And then we also have digitizing important information so that we can get to the point where we can have less storage. Is there any other, what other things are you thinking of from that?
In my eyes, it would be something that's a one-time thing, not something that's ongoing. So I don't know if we can get digitization up and running for the end of June.
It only has to be spoken for by Andrew Jean-Brianne. Spent.
It, it does. I, I guess I'm, we have to provide a little manpower for digitization project going forward. They're going to drop the camera off.
Oh, we don't have, so we don't have like a person that works.
We do not, and I don't have any particular extra payroll budgeted right now.
Got it. So, and that couldn't come from this because payroll can't come from ARPA. Got it?
I think it would be a stretch, but I can inquire.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be done by the end of June anyway, so we think.
Right.
And you've got, you have until twelve thirty-one of 2024 to commit to projects with your ARPA money. And you have until twelve thirty-one, 2026 to actually spend all of it. So you've got some time.
Why are we having the June deadline in our heads?
I don't know.
I thought it was June thirtieth, 2023 we had to commit by.
No, it's twenty, 2024 and you have to be expended by 2026.
Yes, so we have, we have plenty of time.
I have to report by the end of this month what we've expended to date, so.
So far.
Updates, but not like everything else we spent, then?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
That gives us some more time to really understand what our numbers are and then to think more about where priorities are.
Yep.
Do we want to continue or should we give this more time?
I would like more time because I'd like to take this information and create something so I can see what I need to see.
Okay. I'd love to know if Steve has an opinion about what, what if he has a priority?
Yeah, and I have attempted, as I said, I've talked to him as recently as this morning about these projects. And he was very non-committal to either the cemetery shed or the pipes in the transfer station. He, he pointed out that they had done significant work to the pipes in the transfer station on their own when it froze up and cracked this year. And I thought the cemetery shed was more of a priority than it seems to be now, but.
Yeah, I thought it was too. Didn't we, weren't we going to switch one to something else or something?
I think the primary thing we were looking to do is make it so we could store the pieces of plywood they used to protect the turf, which take up a tremendous amount of space and hard to get around and that sort of thing.
But there were two sheds that we were going to switch.
Right.
And then buy one new one.
Yep. So the one that's over there, they're going to move and then put a new one over there that has better access so they can get that stuff.
The other thing that was on the 2022 list that just sort of completely went away was discussion of a salt shed. We ran into the impression that salt shed might be in the vicinity of seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars. And Steve went to look at one and I went to look at one and both of them were well over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Wow, so it went onto the CIP and went off the.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what about, I remember last year we discussed using some of this funding to help with the investigation into the town municipal building. Is that not, that's not on here anywhere?
I don't, I think that had come up as a topic, but we talked about using, I believe, trust fund money that you had in buildings for the municipal, moving forward the municipal building as opposed to this. But I suppose you certainly could.
We haven't had to do all that, all that, get the preliminary information out so we can get something to the town. That's an option.
Sorry, I'm still completely occupied with being on five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
I was on that one three times.
No, no, we're off five hundred. Him and I disagree with five hundred dollars.
They're making their own numbers over there.
But my numbers are good as your numbers.
Okay, good.
That's a, got it. Okay. So, is there anything else we want to discuss about this right now? Do you want to give this more time?
And I, certainly break this out in the third column as well for potentially committed.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'd like to get more information from Steve. So I should follow him and destroy him.
Okay, so then transitioning from that topic to the town municipal building. I have made a fabulous, what do they call it, paper doll? I know, right? But it was actually really helpful because I could see how things could be revamped.
I've built your boat man.
I know.
Where am I?
Did you make a new one?
Kind of my drawings. So I just, that's my friend's favorite.
Is that one we can present for everyone to see?
We, we could theoretically do that.
We can also do this.
I'll drop you my camera. Okay. I will send it to Andy.
Okay. You can dock yourself all you want.
Andy's going to have my working out because that's what's connected to my car. With that, with the lobby.
Yeah, I just kept it just the shape because if I tried to have without it, it made sense to have it. I clustered more of the non-window meeting things.
What version of this did you cut these out of?
Most recent, one story that I can find.
Was that the one that the town, sorry, the tax collector was saying decreased Thursday? Who made them that?
I know, I remember, yeah, I, I, yeah, I rearranged them. Because I need to have it here. So that could go on. And then. Did we ever remember why we need to have both a meeting room and a planning and zoning meeting here? But why we can't have one big awesome meeting room for any of those reasons? Because I was looking at these and going, why, why? Can't just have one big one?
Can you ask Steve to look into an HDMI booster?
Yes.
I think that's what you need because you're going more than thirty feet. I think that's what you're missing. They're not very expensive.
A booster?
It's an HDMI booster. Because I think that's why you cannot connect because the signal is getting so low by the time it gets projected, projected number.
Do you like random booster spaces?
Oh my goodness.
These were just here. I don't know exactly what that is, but.
Well, it looks awesome. Whatever it is.
I didn't even like write one that helped.
Did you email me something?
I, I did.
Hopefully it's here.
We don't need that?
Of course it's going to take, so.
Yeah, right now, good timing. Yeah, and then everyone, you have that one and then this one over here to the town. It's too bad we can't put it on like the moved one, the kit that used to have the screen projectors or you could.
I have it down with my camera now. It's just like the same thing, but we don't have one.
Sorry, I'm just going to have to email it to.
That's fine. I just have a lovely thinking that if I put it on with this old timey, you know, light it up and it. Do you have those in the historical society somewhere? Projector from school?
I mean, I guess I could borrow one.
We may have one. Dig around in the record journals.
I think the problem with what you have right now is that the planning and zoning is not connected to the public space.
Yes, right, so then you could. Well, and that's what we talked about having this here, which means, that's why I struck there with the meeting room. Because if we didn't have to have two, then that moves this all down. You can have this be much bigger. Now there, where they belong, which is across the way. I just, does anyone, does anyone remember why we would need to have two separate meeting rooms? If planning and zoning, use it during the day and then we'd have extra meeting rooms for other things. And you could have it next to planning and zoning so that they can grab their maps and go in there with somebody easily if they just have a nice big room.
Does anyone have any suggestions?
PZB previously said they needed their own meeting room, work room.
Do you remember why, John?
They insisted.
Okay, do we have a reason?
You have to ask them.
I think there are a fair number of projects that require our space, putting together paperwork, that type of thing. And also for plans, planning and zoning quite frequently needs to be able to lay out large plans. And I think the thought was that the setup we have right now with the work room sort of behind Denise's office and the entryway on that end of the building and the meeting room work pretty well, but.
Okay.
Obviously, there's, there's not that many meetings.
I know, I was just thinking. If you, if you have another place that people could meet if you had a few people meeting, it's just very rare that you're having like a large meeting. Like I know we use those rooms, but oftentimes when I'm in that space behind Denise's, pretend that town administrator, deputy town administrator's office, it's me and one other person or two other people, would you be definitely doing a, one of the extra office spaces?
Can you scroll up so we can see the? Scroll down.
I'm going to point everyone's way here. And then if I move a bit over the printer, so sorry.
Yeah, this way it'll a little more central there.
So we had a design. Most of the people that would work in the building didn't like it. So we're back to this. Which you're going to have to also run it by all the fire departments and other people as well. I think one of the things you're going to have an issue with is Karen. For her to get out, it's more than thirty feet. So you can't have that.
Who's Karen? You mean Karen Rossi? No, there's a door there.
Oh, there's a door? Okay.
Yeah, they, yes.
Okay, very similar to what they have now. Okay, it's my mistake. I did talk with both the fire chief and the police chief and they, they don't have any design preference. Two-story, one-story, what have you. Fire chief obviously said, you know, that they would insist on compliance with safety standards, but.
Obviously, makes sense.
So this is kind of like what they have now?
Right, I just moved some things around. I moved, I moved the bathroom. So that they could have a bathroom that the public could access.
So it was the main entrance at the top?
Yes, underneath the email.
So I don't remember what was the staff's issue.
We haven't shown them this.
Oh, I'm sorry?
We've never shown them this.
Oh, but in terms of the other design, because this is kind of a little bit similar, but.
The only staff issue was the two-story. That was the primary.
And they didn't, and I mean TC, tax collector, the tax collector didn't have enough space in the thing. And their other concern was that the sledgeboard was on the second floor. So if the town tax collector wasn't there one day and Denise was on the second floor, people would have to like figure out to go up there. But they did not have a concern about the fact that planning and zoning has a separate door. So if we leave the planning and zoning to have a separate door, but we move Denise, then we're down to two doors. Which really means that if you come in one main entrance, you get tax collector and Denise at the same time.
Is there an entrance or an exit by the break room?
I think there has to be like an emergency exit over there somewhere. But that would be, I would think that we have an emergency exit only.
That, that interplay would work pretty well because I would say multiple times a day Denise or I jog down to the town clerk tax collector's office to assist with something that requires both of us.
All right, so I need some deciphering.
I'm sorry, I'm hearing it's atrocious.
What is this?
Copier. Okay, no, it's okay.
Particularly, but okay, now that you mention, I can kind of make that out.
Yeah.
And just to the left of it is, what's that?
The janitor's closet that backs up to the bathroom so you can have the pipes. The only problem with this is that all novel pipes are in the same place.
Yeah.
Like the bathroom is not, so we could. We could shift so make that bathroom accessible and move that bathroom.
It is not possible to not have clear handles on our shelves.
Are we getting the paper dolls? Okay.
Well, I just, I'm just trying to, yeah, it's fine.
Andy, ready for another one?
Let's go.
This is really lovely. Am I finding the standard? There it is. Right here. Why is it just spiraling?
Just thinking about it.
It's not really though. Did you have all this ready?
Did you just get like forty messages there, Mr. Andy? Why does it keep counting up?
I was wondering myself, but.
That doesn't look good. I think it's time to clean out your inbox. That's what I.
Oh my gosh.
Oh, actually, Andy, this is the email. Hey, Andy, can you open this other email I sent you? Because the one you opened is from like March. I just realized, because I did move the bathroom. It's the one right on top.
This one right here?
Yeah, because I, I think I sent you all the move bathroom. Now that I'm looking at what I wrote. Yes, I did move the bathroom. It's the pipes. So it's almost the same. So all the pipes right there.
Uh-oh, okay. Is this down here now?
Stair slash elevator.
Yes, yes, okay. All right. You do teach math, right? Not drafting, because I would be very concerned if you dropped drafting, so.
No, and every math teacher has atrocious handwriting.
Really?
Yeah, have you not, have you seen a math teacher with a handwriting?
Not that I look, but.
No. So it's almost the same except that I moved all the bathrooms back right here.
Yeah.
And the janitor right here, slightly moved town collector, tax collector over so the pipes could all be in the same place.
So basically that good.
I don't have a kitchenette here. That's about the question.
That's in the break room, isn't it?
I think you have to have.
Could the kitchenette be another side of the town clerk, clerk tax collector? What's in that space above?
That's the, that's the.
Body or.
Oh, that's a lot. Sorry, I didn't.
Like what? Oh my God, not the jolly. I think we just, I don't know, you can have all of that. And have a window. Like I think if you, if you, I mean, we could flip off the break room and the stairs elevator and then they're much closer. I don't know what the thing is. I mean, I have pipes all over my house. I don't understand.
It's not like you can't have it anywhere. It just helps if they're in one area, it's most affordable.
We can cluster them there and then like we could flip stairs, elevator and break room and then they're much closer.
I was trying to find a way to.
What's going on here? You gotta listen over to.
Oh my goodness. Never sharing screens again, are you?
So have you got your trends yet or I will go see? I do.
You do, Olivia? That is a big fancy picture. Likes seeing it out.
Oh, 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 look, look at the, the penmanship. It's so excellent.
So it's John's computer. So what I was trying to do, and of course you can't show it, is extend the town clerk tax collector because they need more space. So that's here and not there. Make the planning and zoning meeting room bigger, having a second meeting room if everyone wants it. But making that maybe meeting room and also the office space for, you know, extra. I took two of the extra office spaces off for if there's, you know, if somebody needs to have an office for a little while for some reason. I put all the toilets together with the kitchenette, across the printer, copy machines. That's kind of like an outside inside because it doesn't have to have rooms, does it, Eric? It has to be an area of within use. That's a possibility of a place you can actually make the hallway into more of a meeting area if you need to. Like if you had a birthday party or whatever. And if you see here, you've got administrator has a window, the town clerk tax collector has a window. And then here is the window to the planning and zoning that you can see if somebody comes up, they can go there. There's access to the toilet. You can have the elevator be only for the people in the town hall because it's only to the basement. But it could also be accessible if it needed to be to the public if it turned out there's something that the public needed. Stairs. Stairs, entrance, stairs, exits. I think I took away one exit over there, maybe I can't do that, I think John probably knows. One, two, three exits. But maybe you could have a door in one of these too. Anyway, and the custodial, I forgot to name it or whatever, so I was just trying to find a place for it. Maybe you can put the elevator, I don't, anyway. I think the thing is that we kind of know what we have, and we kind of know about how much space we need. And I'm wondering how dialed in and perfect it has to be if they're gonna come up with things that we don't realize.
I think it goes back to the firms that we're interested in exploring the relationship with. What they need to give us some kind of estimate in terms of what this would cost. I think that's part of the next process.
Yeah.
Because also, in terms of presenting something to delivery session in two thousand twenty-four, you're gonna need something in terms of layout, what the building kind of looks like and how much it costs, what's included, what's not included. So, when people ask questions, you have answers to those questions.
I, I think that particularly Valen and Reche Construction Firms certainly be available to do that for you. And when I talked to both of them, that was their suggestion, you know? Once you've got the basic style of building, you want roughly what you want for square footage, talk to us and we can put together schematics, whether they're not architectural drawings, but...
Because now we're just like into tiny semantics, but I think we all agree, like we're, we're using the same stuff. We're rearranging it different ways, but we're using the same information, same space. It's not really up to debate as much. We've got the one floor, we've got the basement, we've got the, what we need.
And they're likely to tell you when they sit down, you would know, you absolutely can't have the bathrooms there. It's gonna have thirty percent more to your cost.
Right, then we move them around and figure out where to put them. But I think at this point, we're at that place where we need to have professionals. What do you guys feel? Does anyone in the audience have anything they want to add or suggestions, or are you sitting here thinking we're not making sense?
I think maybe the next step could be for me to invite some of the contractors that were interested the first time around or all of them to come talk with you, tell you what they can do, and then at that point you can decide what you want to do for an RFP or an RIP or any of the other new hybrids.
Do you want me to tape my thing down for you, Andy?
Could you, Andy, could you pass these two to the staff? And just see what they think about those two things?
Hold on, let me put the one back out where I moved the kitchenette, hold on.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna send you another email, Andy.
I have to straighten myself. Can we make them look good?
Yeah, it looks good, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. The first agenda, I'm curious, has this group referenced any of the old materials that were done some years ago?
Yes.
Where basically it's exactly the same, and you had estimates, and, I mean, I know they're outdated.
I know.
And you're getting wrong, right? I'm just wondering why we're going back to the drawing board when all of this work was actually done probably six years ago? I'm guessing, I don't know, Scott probably knows exactly.
Well, some of those particular designs, yes, they look very similar to some things that we proposed before. But yes, you are correct, the pricing is totally...
It's way up, yeah, yeah, no, it's way up.
I was talking to a couple of people there in the building trade on Saturday, and they're talking about residential construction at four hundred dollars a square foot, and commercial at five hundred. That's what's out there now.
So, double the price.
Back then, when we were talking, we're in the two hundreds, three hundred dollars, and it's considered a little bit higher, so...
Yep, absolutely.
And I think that's the thing, is that there was a lot of complaints and a lot of reasons people were upset was that there are so many filing cabinets, and they felt that that wasn't gonna be necessary. So, what we're trying to do is take away...
That's minutia, though.
Well, that minutia is what makes the votes not happen. And that's what, that's why...
You think somebody didn't vote for it because there were too many filing cabinets?
I think that they didn't feel that it was ready to go, or whatever. I mean, what do you, what are your thoughts on why it didn't get voted for, one of the many other times it's been up?
People told us that.
Too many filing cabinets?
Yep.
They were just searching for words.
No.
Okay. I'm not gonna disagree with you, but that's like...
I think it was a lot of space dedicated to the filing cabinet, and it's about that there were too many filing cabinets, but that we were paying for so much space to contain.
Yeah, that's another question that I have. If you're going into a digitization project, why would you, I mean, if you're, are you going full on?
So, what we're trying to do is have the, we've asked for the absolute minimum possibility once we've digitized, minimum space needed. And there are some things that have to be accessible, like the town clerk tax collector. Some things have to be usable, and then other things can be in the basement, which is why we want to have a basement where the, where the things that need to be, you know, if you pull it up once in a blue moon, then go down the stairs and get it.
Sure, absolutely.
And don't, and don't, you know, temperature regulate and all that stuff, every single thing to that level. So, what we're trying to do is take all the comments that came from the past projects, make this as small, tight and condensed as possible. I personally feel very strongly with energy efficiency, it's something that our town will be much more impressed with, and that if we really focused on making this really well insulated, well built, well designed, that the town will be much more interested, so...
But how does a digitization project play into this?
I, I think one of the...
I mean, I don't know what you're trying to do, I don't know if you're contacting firms that offer this as software, and they come and do it for you and it'll be done.
You can, you can certainly do that. There are a number of documents, files, that sort of thing that the town is required to keep in perpetuity.
Can I copy, can I copy?
You can use electronic copies now for most of these things. The exception may be the plot plans and land records, which take up a sizable amount of space.
They don't have to be on the first floor.
They don't, although those probably do. Those are used on a close to daily basis, you know, people coming in wanting to see those property records. They're one of the more sought after.
So, you have some space for that kind of stuff?
I think we still need some space for storage. One of the things that concerns me and I know concerns other employees is we're talking about digitization. We're gonna digitize, we're gonna digitize. I wasn't here, but other employees have told me that you actually passed a fairly sizable amount of money in a budget to digitize years ago, and it didn't happen. And if we're going into proposing a new building, it would pack in the other side of balance.
Yeah, because nobody, why do we not do it?
I know.
Yes.
Do you want to tell us?
No, I'm gonna tell you here in public session.
Okay.
It's a personal issue in my eyes.
Got it.
I, I think there is some concern that we're gonna talk about, you know, we're gonna digitize all this stuff. We don't need space, and the same thing with the meeting room. We don't need the meeting room, because we're gonna be doing the town hall over again, and that's gonna be meeting space. And I, I think, to my mind, I'm wondering how many years that's gonna be, because I don't see us proposing a new office building, proposing a large digitization project and renovating the town hall all in eighteen months or so, so we've got...
And I feel like we have this space for a lot longer, and that's really covering a lot of those spaces. And that, as we grow out of this space, then we really have to be prepared with that town hall, you know, as well. And then the digitization piece can, those files can go to some other area in the town temporarily until they're digitized. So, I just feel like there's a lot of, yeah, I get it, and, and, and I can absolutely a hundred percent empathize with the frustration of saying something's gonna happen and then it not happening, of thinking something should go forward and it didn't go forward. I think we had a lot of periods of time where there was some frustration there, so I get that.
I wasn't trying to express frustration, I was just...
No, no.
I was just looking at timelines and thinking how fast we're gonna...
The view of people thinking about, yep, I agree.
Because that, that's something the board's talked about. If, if we're gonna do something like this, we have to commit to doing that digitization project.
Which is why I was asking about it with Arbo funds.
So, I'm thinking in terms of, if this goes forward, let's say it gets passed in, you know, March of two thousand twenty-four, between that period of time and when this building goes into being completely ready, that's the time for us to concentrate on digitization.
Right.
Because it's applicable to this, to they make this work, we have to do that particular project.
So, when I was saying during the Arbo fund conversation that we should do digitization, why was that not something that we're excited about, interested in?
Well, I was in a misconception that we had to do it by the end of June of this year.
Okay, so you're thinking it has to be done sooner?
Yeah, so now we've got some time, that's a possibility that we could do that. And I think part of it is that what Andy needs to check into is our salary is something that can be put into that particular...
But that could be something that we hire someone in the summer for, in turn.
Could be, but if you can't charge their wages to the Arbo...
Right, then you can figure that out.
Can I ask another?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm a little bit familiar with digitization, and I'm wondering why you're not just outsourcing the project, which then would eliminate the issue with personnel writing salaries.
Could do that too.
I mean, if you cut the money, it will be done in months.
Well, one of the things that the board also has to talk about is digitization of what? And some people take the tack of everything from now on is digitized, or how far back do you go? Because some of the things that we've talked about is in terms of the space for some of these particular storage of papers are stuff that they're actively working on.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody's actively working on something, they shouldn't have to go to the basement to get it. So, like maps and stuff like that that they're working on, they should have access to them right there.
Sure.
But, you know, plot plans for developments that were done in the seventies. Do they have to have those just like that? Probably not. Do we digitize them? Yes, we do, maybe we don't, I don't know.
Maybe we make the decision not to do plot plans, because that's something we've, you just talked about, that's maybe not necessary.
So, I think it's, the discussion I don't think we've had yet, as far as I remember, is what are we digitizing? And I think we need to decide what that is.
It would seem to me that you would want to do this before, or at least have an idea of what you're, so that you understand what your spacings are, rather than plan for it and then say, we're gonna do it someday in the future, and then have potentially extra space, because as soon as you...
I was under the impression that we had already written down what actually had to have space, and that that was post-digitization, and that the plan was to work with digitization on the way. That was what I was working on.
If you don't do it first and just get it out of the way...
But that's why, that's why I said I want to have the funding, go to that right now. To me, it's, it's an important thing to do right away.
Check it off the list, get it done and move on.
And we're starting to digitize some of these things now with the new financial software in place. We're scanning all our bills and attaching those to manifest that sort of thing. For right now, we've been advised by our auditors not to throw away, I called and asked when we could stop keeping the paper bills.
Right.
Our auditors said, don't stop keeping your paper bills until the audit's complete, and after the audit, you could...
But that's a definite, like, three to six years that they're gonna want that, and then you give purge and...
Right, yeah.
And I, I think they maybe want the last purge after twelve months.
Twelve purge.
On the end of the audit, as long as you can keep the...
As long as you do the electronic ones, perfect. So, that's a huge change coming up.
Yeah, it will take care of...
So, that we just have to hire someone or pay someone to do this rest of this project?
And, and can I go back to something that Deborah brought up before? I think you asked this, but maybe not.
Okay.
At least in terms of my thought, we're trying to get this building as small as possible to meet our particular needs and anticipate some growth. But the idea is to take the money that we're now paying for the daily billing and rent at sixty thousand dollars a year, put that toward a particular bond, depending on what their interest rate, how much that is, and then also seeing, just like the town that Barrington did, see if we can get one of those congressional grants. They asked for half a million, they got one point five million. So, basically, they didn't have to spend too, too much local money. I'm not anticipating we're getting that much, but at least getting, get something possibly, so that when we go to the taxpayers, we'll say, okay, well, this is how much we're spending right now. This is gonna give you that amount of a bond, and then possibly getting some money from grants and stuff like that. So, hopefully, they'll say, ooh, okay, that sounds okay. Because I think the biggest thing we're gonna have is in terms of convincing the taxpayer, this is something we should be doing.
Right, I mean, have you done a twenty, twenty-five year plan of renting the building versus building this building, including maintenance?
Yeah, we've got, we haven't done that, but we've got in terms of...
Because to me, that, from a voting perspective, that's king.
Yeah, and the hard part with the renting is that we have first nine years figured out, but as they increase, we don't know.
We're into year three, I think, because it's year three right now. Yeah, so we've got two more extensions. After that, he could say, hey, no, I'm gonna do something else.
Right.
So, there's a horizon there that's like...
He likes the cash.
But the, the thing is that we're spending, we're, we're maintaining that building, we're updating that building, we're doing all the works that building...
Yeah, Andy shared that with me, and I was shocked.
Yeah, and, and we're, and we don't own it. It doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense.
Right, well, and, and then you could renegotiate as well and say, no, you're gonna maintain it, and we're gonna give you this money, because it's, you know, an older building, and you're gonna start sinking cash into it, it doesn't make much sense.
Back during the negotiation process, he gave us a reduced amount of rent in exchange for us maintaining the building. So, there was a trade-off there, so...
Which, like she said, is, is one thing when it's a different building, it's a different thing when it's...
I understand that.
Insurance policy, that didn't handle.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know, I haven't seen the number, so...
Yep. When we went from paying no rent at the old town hall to paying five thousand dollars a month, that's kind of hard to take.
Yep, that was the first year we got paid for, but after that, it has nothing.
Yeah. Now, do you have something else to say?
Paul Wazowski, like relating, following from a distance, so I apologize. Three things. First of all, it's good to see your direction. I appreciate the direction, and I have a lot of respect for designers and architects, so getting them in this process early is good. The second thing, with March two thousand twenty-four in mind, and I'm probably sure you're entertaining a back plan that's pretty rigorous from that date in terms of readiness, and so we're almost into May already. So, you're in a tight window in that respect. And the third comment is that there's a rich history to this, and I share Deborah's desire to, to, to move forward some of the past, some of the design elements and some of the work that's been done. So, an exercise for you might be to go through that chronology and figure out what has value and what doesn't have value, and make that part of the presentation to the people you invite into this process from the beginning, so they know what's there. Because I, I think it, you know, it went all the way through the exercise at one point, and the vote failed. But there's a lot of value to, to, to that design and what you were trying to do, and to these designs. So, I would encourage you to, to make that part of what you do right now, to look at that chronology and say, well, this is good, this has value, that doesn't.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know, last year I went through all the old shirets, I went through all the old building designs, back as far as I could. Was on some other committees working on these designs, so I feel like I have gone through a lot. I don't know if there's something, is there, is there anything in particular that we're forgetting, missing, not thinking of?
I don't know, I did a lot of deja vu looking at these things, because...
I know, well, at some point...
The committees have gone through many of these particular relationships, so...
At some point, there are just office space rooms we need, and, and things you have to have, bathrooms and stairs and whatever. And then there's some flexibility, like, like the meeting room, I think is, you know, and it's, I think that's where we have to be very, very cognizant of, you know, do we need it? And are we ready to defend it? Because that's, like we said, the filing, all those file rooms were the thing that made people upset. And then we had, I think we had some extra space, people didn't know what it was for, and they were very upset about that, so... But the town has made it very clear, if you're gonna have something in the building, I want to know a hundred percent that you need it. Don't want wasteful, you know, I don't want a lot of extra room for growth down the road, I don't want a lot of extra space.
Parking lot was the other thing that was targeted.
Yep.
They didn't like it because it was too massive, it looked like Walmart, they didn't like that.
One thing that I had said originally is I would love for it to have room for growth. And so, I think that's why the basement doesn't really have any plans, is that it is an option if there was a space issue. It could go that way.
Yeah.
But what, what growth are you anticipating?
I'm not, because I think we're gonna do more from home or more, you know, computers. Right, so I'm not, but, but if somebody's concern is, you know, what if there's growth, what if things change? You know, that's why having the extra space is a nice, but it doesn't have to be used that way.
The basement could only allow the angst over files and storage too. It's not showing on the floor plan as a dedicated space for files, and it could certainly be used to his advantage, and it's, it's not, you know, the extra cost that including that space on the main floor.
Right, that can be locked to you, oh, look, if it's, you know, can have special space, whatever. So, I feel like we've taken so many of the concerns of all the different buildings and tried to really think about them, and then figure out what works. I think at this point, we're down to like, where does this room go? And I think, you know, the fact is, we know this room has to go somewhere, and we know we want it next to certain things. So, at some point, it's, you know, come down to architecture.
The other thing, one of the, I don't remember which one it was, but one of the ones, we had contingency plan for extending the building if we needed to in the future.
Yeah, I'd ask for that.
And I just, looking at this, you could extend out the bottom here and add on something.
Right.
So, you maybe could do it... So you maybe could do it, I don't know what else you could do it, but.
You can wing glitter it if needed.
Yeah, it's ridiculous, well.
Or that would just be.
Right.
So you just, I think that's one of the things when you talk to whoever we engage is, you know, we want the ability to expand the building at some point in the future.
Right.
Because you don't know what's going to happen.
And one thing we talked about too was having some space, like, um, you know, one of these, you know, meeting spaces have it, have it be, you know, have this, we talked about having the sliding walls or something, if you need it, if you wanted to make it bigger, you could always just have it separately. Like we could downstairs, you can make two different rooms or whatever. I mean, there's, there's lots of ways we can, uh, try to make ourselves flexible for the future.
And I think, Andy, your comment about if, if this particular thing passes, the, the work on the town hall, the old town hall is not going to commence, just like that. There's going to be a lag period. So you're not going to get that particular meeting space where we're going to have to continue to use this particular space, so. There's going to be challenges with the town hall as well. Because we're looking at doing facility upgrades, parking upgrades, the building, of course. So there's going to be call, discussions with those particular issues as well, so it's like.
And that's, I think, what, what happened was we tried to do all of it at once, that was overwhelming and did not go forward. So we're trying to think about, you know, the library, making sure that's all set, getting this building under control and, and feeling all set. And then you can take on the town hall. I had tried to reduce the number of buildings to worry about, that is not an option. So we're just trying to figure out how to move forward with what we have and think about each one in their time, I guess.
Yep, because it's hard to concentrate on all those things all at once.
Well, and if, there's no money for it.
Yep.
So at this point, is the board interested in me bringing?
Yes, I am, sorry, yes.
And in the interim, have a conversation with the staff about those two, who are planning, see what they like and what they don't like?
Can I send you a better picture? I just, they're going to, I don't want it to be like so messy, so I just rearranged it and tried to write in things.
Can I blow over there and blow them all over the place? No, okay.
You know what, what did you bring, Mr. Budley, because?
I brought my intellect, how about that?
She brought a picture, I brought it.
So, I brought my intellect.
I'm staying.
Some of my experience from serving on so many.
I don't like Bowlin.
Well, I think Andrea from Bowlin actually had, uh, fairly good connection with folks who had done some of the, uh, planning for you, site planning and, uh, that sort of thing actually had, when I was talking to John Tappan about finding the plans and John was getting them for me, Andrea showed up at the first meeting we had with the same plans that, uh, had with him.
Yes, you guys had, you met with somebody, what was the John you think, you, John?
Uh, we met with Andre, I can't remember his last name, uh, from Bowlin.
Cloes.
Pardon?
Cloes?
Yes, I'm a Cloes. And, and the board also met with, um, Mr. Niche, from Niche Construction. I believe, uh, Corino at the time had told me that they were too busy, um, to commit and.
And I think we decided on, we had gone through all the different kinds of, of ways you can do the building and had talked about, you know, do one, uh, construction build, architect build and all that stuff and I feel like we mostly have.
And you had some differing opinions from those contractors, knew each other, why?
Theirs is better.
Theirs is better.
Yep.
Did you have, did you, so your business?
So we have a meeting set up in May, the meeting, right?
You were meeting May first, we decided to skip the meeting on the fifteenth.
Right, because of people being away. So, so should we aim for, that's the regular select for a meeting, when's the next building?
Eight.
No, we're not having that on eight.
Oh, well.
So the twenty-second, should we ask them to come?
We could do something on eight if you want.
I am not available.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
I will say that over and over.
Twenty-second is the normal select for a meeting.
Oh, it is. I have a building, I think we decided not to have the normal select for a building because there's a meeting on the fifteenth.
No, there shouldn't.
Yeah, that was the one that we.
We canceled. And then we were going to go ahead with the building, select for a meeting.
So we're, so we're.
And then the next normal one's the thirtieth because of.
Okay, so is it okay for us to have the first, the thirtieth without any normal select for a meeting?
That's what we discussed, because there's only one thing that was coming up that we would have to sign and we were all willing to come in and have to assign.
Okay, all right, I had the twenty-second was a normal one.
Sorry.
I got it.
The thirtieth. I make them in blue and pink, it helps.
It just says select for.
I put building in pink and select for in blue.
So contractors for the twenty-second?
Yeah, they're available and if not, then we can do the really fun doodle pool, which is always goes a little further.
So one at six and one at seven? Yep.
Sure, you got it, yeah. Um, we should have sex, so we're not cramping each other, just kidding.
I have one housekeeping item for you.
Okay, did you want to get them, I really nicely though?
A Hall part, isn't that, with the tape?
It's really good, you can just put it back together, it's like a paper doll.
Back in March, the select board voted to approve a discretionary preservation easement for a barn. But there was one signature page that needed to be signed and when Scott Marsh, uh, came to the office today for the assessing, he said that he needed the select board to sign this before he could.
And did we all miss that?
Always. We did, I don't, no, I'm assuming it was a very thick packet, but it also needs to be dated.
In fact, none of us signed it though, or something?
Which, what date do you want on?
March sixth, which is the date you approved it.
So we're going to put you as chair, chairing that down to the second one.
And there is a copy of the minutes in the packet showing what you did.
Read directly. This is black ink, I get it. It wrote in black ink, yes.
I've got black ink.
I was ready to play once, that was.
Is that my new one sent to you?
Yes.
Is there anything else we can think of?
Uh, I have.
Did you have something?
Because I can give you.
Just a question, just for my.
Absolutely.
Do you have a list, I haven't been keeping up on all of your meetings for quite some time. And one, did you have a list of when all your meetings have been, so I could go back and read minutes about the building?
That sounds fascinating and absolutely we have that.
Yes, I can send you most of the dates.
That would be great.
Yeah, and do you, have you had a chance to see the old shirets and the other pictures from the past?
I'm sorry?
Have you had a chance to see the old shirets? I don't, I don't know when you, so there's a lot of old pictures from when they've tried to pass the building similar to this. So you can feel free to look at those too, they're in the town meeting building, yeah.
Yeah, I have very minimal, I don't even know where this is going, where the plan is.
Oh, okay, so our hope right now is by the library, you know, the library and the, um, the museum. And then there's that wooded area between the church and that is the plan. Yeah.
Also, on the website is all the materials from, I think, the last two, Town Center Vision.
Yeah, I believe there's still one there as well.
Organized and, and, and like a folder for town, so if you need or not.
Let me track it down and I can tell you, at the top of my head, I'm trying to recollect.
And as you're going through it, if you come up with things you see that were missing, please let us know. And it's nice to have a second, a third, fourth, that I was looking at it, so thank you for doing that work.
Great. That's my only other question, does you, because I don't know how you all work on this, but, um, does the state have a requirement as to how, I'm sure they do, how long you have to keep files and then how, you have to get permission to get rid of?
Yes. There's a, a statute that stipulates, um, basically the, the timeline for all municipal documents. And it is, uh, probably two and a half pages long, as I recall, and some documents you can get rid of in twelve months. Some three years, some seven years, uh, some you have to keep in perpetuity. Fairly extensive and detailed, uh, listing.
And you think we as a town have been up to date on cleansing or?
Uh, no, not exactly.
I would say no.
Um, we, we have done some, particularly with things like, uh, you know, check stubs and employee things, the things that you can get rid of after five or seven years significantly. But by statute, you have to retain, you know, evidence of any payments you make, invoices, uh, check records, uh, bank statements, that sort of thing. All of them have, as I said, differing, uh, lengths of time you have to keep them on file and available.
Moving to a new building did a lot of help there.
Yeah, it reminded people what was there and that's all, yeah, that's a good point.
So.
Great questions they made here.
I'm sorry, did you have other questions or?
They came and it went, so.
You know what, we're here, you come back up if you think of it.
Because I'm going to eat up some time asking to put some items on our to-do list. So under our agendas in terms of old business, I'd like us to put on, and this is not necessarily something we have to do right away, but this cost analysis thing, which we did on, I think, the TCVC, but I don't think we've done it for this one, so that's something to look at. So renting versus building. I talked about staff feedback, history of the process, that's something that we have to do, which is good. And the last thing is the whole digitization. What's the timeframe, what are we going to digitize, what are we not going to digitize? And I think that includes staff involvement. So I think, can we put those so we don't forget them?
Yep.
Because there's going to be other things that we're going to need to add, so we don't forget those particular items.
Do we have whatever we need to be digitizing moving forward?
No, we don't.
Can we find out what that is that we need?
Sure, it would either be, uh, a contracted service or it would be purchase of, um.
Scanning, scanner.
Yeah, the scanner of sorts, it would be large enough, depending on what we're going to do. You know, when, um, Stratford Regional Planning came in, they bought, they brought a wide bed scanner with them that could take, you know, two by four, check lands, that sort of thing.
Check is probably five or six years ago, there was twenty-some odd thousand dollars put in the budget to digitize, that was an outside firm. And maybe what, if you could, maybe contact that firm again and say, we're looking at this again, what is the cost now? Because that was all outsourced.
And you could ask Stratford Regional, do they, you know, what they look into and.
Right, I get fairly regular contacts, like on a weekly basis. People who are interested in talking to me about digitizing.
They would love to talk to you about that. The ones reaching out to you are probably not the ones that are going to be the most affordable, we'll see.
So I have a general question that isn't talking about, just totally related to this. I've been trying for quite some time, um, to, to contact the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Are they active? They don't respond to non.
Really?
Yeah, I didn't, I've never gotten a response, but I would like to read, I mean, when I was working in Massachusetts, we all, that, that association in Massachusetts sent all of the municipalities or school districts books that, um, that had all the information, updated information, I don't, it seems like a lot of it was annually.
Yeah.
But it talked about how, how you do this, how you did, how you, what you have to do in these areas. I would like to have a better understanding of the New Hampshire, um, processes for municipalities.
Yeah, the municipal association, uh, is active, um, have you been to their website?
I have, it, it, it seems to be totally related or focused, obviously, on people who work for the municipalities.
It is.
Yeah, but I've, I've written the emails saying, or I guess emails saying, I'd love to purchase one of your books, are they available to non-municipal employees and I've never gotten a response, so do you have copies of those?
We do have copies of some of them, we have, or electronic copies, that they're typically, are fees involved for them.
Yeah, I would buy it, I mean, I would buy it, I just not.
Let me, um, I've got some personal contact there that I can bring.
Yeah, normally if you contact them, like, it's within an hour that they come back to see you.
But their focus is very definitely town officials, elected officials.
Correct, right, which is what that was, and I used to be one of them.
Yeah, right, right, right.
Better access, but I would love to be able to learn more.
You can read all their newsletters online.
The newsletters are like just on.
You can read all of them online, you can search them.
They have a ton of information in those, like in the newsletter, yeah, definitely check those out.
Their bill tracker is available to the public too, if you follow things in the legislature, they have, just updated it, it's very easy to use.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
You can also read all those statutes online.
You could, um, run for something too and then become a town official and then you have really easy access. I'm just saying, it's like a really easy way to do that.
Boy, that was really slick.
I know, right, like straight in there.
I think it's open access, we could appoint her to something.
Like, oh, yeah, what's that? We could appoint her to something, what do we have planned?
I'm on to, uh, to, I'm on like.
That's right.
Right trails committee and recreation committee.
So when you contact them in the future, be like, I'm part of the whatever and I'm asking for.
Yeah, and I may be able to help.
Okay, thank you. Andy will get you the door to go in, don't worry about it, they're great, they just probably want to know like what am I going with.
Yeah.
I had two other updates.
Yes.
We have, I'm trying to think of her name now, the woman from Pierborough. Didn't come to the public hearing on the energy, uh, process moving forward for community power.
Emily Mans.
And I have filed the paperwork with the P, the PUC, uh, moving forward for that process. We should have an answer by May seventh, um, from the PUC, who is expected to approve that. Also, we are down to the final wire with the transfer station solar array project. Everything is in place now, everything has been inspected. We are just waiting for a date and time from, uh, New Hampshire Electric Co-op line crew to come in and shut the power off so we can flip the switch and make it grid live.
I'm very excited.
Expressed the, the desire to have the date and time and time, so we can invite people to be there when it's live, that sort of thing.
That'd be great. And, um, have you heard from Eversource's arborists? Because they had, were supposed to have reached out and I just didn't know if you had heard from them yet.
I, the only thing I've gotten from Eversource regarding arborism is a list of places they intend to spray this year.
Great, that's, uh, what we're talking about, so I will just stay on it then, sounds fun. All right.
Anything from Eversource in terms of our banner request?
Uh, yes, we are good to go with New Hampshire Electric Co-op and, uh, Eversource on that. I think I told Steve like that, but I will double check.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
All right.
So our next meeting is the first?
Yes, oh, God.
Then the twenty-second for building and then the thirtieth?
First, twenty-second, thirtieth, correct.
That's a, yes.
We are all in agreement, you're in a good spot. All right, um, move to adjourn?
Segment.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all right. Thank you very much, everyone for being here, it was nice to have participation and I really appreciate it. Yeah, well, Mr. Budley feels that way.